I'll call this meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. First order of business, I'd like to welcome Amber Haskins, who is filling in for Mrs. Stipes. She and Rand are on vacation this week, so.
Thank you very much.
You've done this before?
Yeah.
Very good.
Few years.
Few years, very good, very good. This is a part of the meeting that we'll have a moment of reflection, and I hope you'll keep in mind and in your prayers, the three young men that were seriously burned last night over at Hercules in a fire, so if you will, let's take a moment to reflect. We now rise from the flag of allegiance, and I'm going to ask Councilman Steve Hubbard, if he would lead the way.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one. I'm looking under Public Hearings, Part III, and I'm looking down at C, water and sewer rate increases, and D, the proposed annual budget for fiscal year 1819, and I think we can eliminate them since they've already been covered.
Those public hearings have already been held.
The public hearings have already been held.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clark, you would call council?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
And Councilman Joe Walter.
Aye.
That is five oh and one, thank you very much. Under Public Hearings, we have a conditional use permit request by Peggy Beasley for a loudspeaker amplification, or sound amplification, outdoor sound system, to be used in excess of town Christiansburg's noise ordinance at 255, 275, and 365 Starlight Drive Southeast. Tax map numbers 529A, 1259A, 13, and 59A14 in the B3 General Business District. Is there anyone here to address this issue tonight? If so, I'll ask you to stand, give your residence address, and you can come to the podium, or you can stand at your chair, just address all comments to Council on today. Anyone here would like to comment?
I live at 435 Starlight Drive, and...
Your name?
Roger Ben Teicher.
All right, thank you.
Couple of years ago, when they first started the sound system, I went outside to take my dogs out. I heard three shots. I pulled my phone, was getting ready to call the Christiansburg Police Department, and just as I got my phone out, the music started playing. We weren't notified, told, but, I mean, it's definitely a problem when the sound is that loud. You know, I'm worried about the tax value, or the value of my property, if this thing goes and nobody wants to live around it. It's like living next to a racetrack. Nobody wants to live where there's a lot of noise, so I'm against it.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's another one. I'll close this public hearing. Our second is a zoning request by Guy Matthew and Wendy W. Funk at 1800 Depot Street Northeast. Tax map numbers 498A90 and 498A90A in the B3 General Business zoning district to the R1, to R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Property is designated as residential and future land use map of 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this issue?
Hello, we are Matt and Wendy Funk, we live at 1800 Depot Street Northeast. We are here to, I guess, answer any questions that the council or anyone would have. We went before the town council, or the planning committee, and cited the issue, so we're here in support of it tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I do have one conservative comment, and it's related to our noise ordinance. Currently, it's business, which means a certain level can be on the property, but if it were to be rezoned residential, that lowers the noise that the businesses around you can create. I'd like to just see your opinion on that.
We don't hear any, really, anything, other than the traffic. We have, I mean, we have, what, autos on one end, and I think it's an old place on the other end, so we haven't, yeah, but we haven't had any, we don't even hear anything out of them, so.
Fine. Okay. I would like it stated for the record, though, that there is a concern, because what you're asking is indefinite, and the businesses may change, and therefore their needs may change, and whoever might move in there, and so that's something that I would just like council to consider when making a decision, because it does change based upon our noise ordinance. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else to address this issue? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing. Under the consent agenda, we have the council meeting minutes of May 22, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Ms. Haskins?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
And Councilman Joe Walter.
Aye.
Okay, that is five oh and one again. We move into our citizens' comments, and this is where citizens can come before council to discuss any issues, problems, concerns. You have, if you, under the same guidelines as the planning, as the public hearing, if you will stand, you give us your name and residential address, and your comments limit to three minutes. Is there anyone here? Did Dr. speak?
Good evening, my name is Andy Shack, live at 1392 Dow Street, Christiansburg. I'm just here to address some of the issues we're still having at 1392 Dow Street. I know there's new town council people here, congratulations on your election. I'd like to thank Mike Barber, the mayor, I would like to thank Brad Stipes, he's not here, Andy Warren, and Jerry Henline, which is the building inspector. They've been great with the open lines of communications reference this illegal dog kennel that we have at 1392 Dow Street. Filling the new town council people, Victoria and Benjamin Crockett was arrested for child abuse and other gun violations there. After their arrest, what we felt was a puppy mill indeed was confirmed. I do have a new photo that I do want to give to the town. This is a picture of what was in the basement, which confirms that they were indeed raising puppies and selling them, beside the kennels that were out back, so I'd like to pass that along to the town. What we want to do this evening is to ask town council to pass a new ordinance pertaining to puppy mills, so we don't have this issue again. We are fearful that, once they both get out of jail, yes, sir?
Before you go too far, I want to just review that. From what I understand, that location, they had several children, and all the children have been taken to a foster home. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I think there were something like 12 dogs?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, and all then have been taken somewhere.
That's correct.
So right now, the situation in that home is, is anybody in that home?
No, sir. That home has been condemned by the town of Christiansburg because of the feces.
Okay, all right, that's not...
Inside the home.
All right. Well, thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no, sir. Any questions, feel free to ask. I do have 11 facts about a puppy mill that I'd like to pass out to you.
Sign. You're welcome. Thank you.
Of these 11 facts about a puppy mill, I highlighted 2, 4, 5, and 10 for you, and these were extremely clear at the time of their arrest, of things that were going on. That picture I gave to Andrew Warren just now, shows on number four, the cramping of the dogs. They were having three dogs per cage. It's not fair to the animals, let alone us, hearing the dogs barking, and the dogs running at large, and the smell and nuisance, but it's also, to me, in my opinion, it's animal cruelty. Number two clearly states that the Crockett's had three litters last year, in 12 months, three litters. That gives the female dog no recovery time, and to me, that's cool, that female, you know, God made it so they come in heat once a year, not three times a year. Number five talks about the contaminating of the water, but it also contaminated the house, and the children had to live among those feces, which led to the condemned, the house being condemned. And then number 10 is why I'm here stressing that we need a, some kind of puppy mill law that would restrict the number of litters per household per year to one, and that's because, right now, we're limited on regulations, the enforcement, which leads to no cleanup control, and that's how we ended up with the condemned home. So, I'm here speaking on behalf of Farm and Forest Subdivision. There's other people sitting in the crowd, I don't know if they want to get up and speak, and the only other concern we have that we'd like for you to consider is the new ordinance that you did pass, which clarified what adult dog was, whereas, right now, it's four adult dogs, and if you have one male and three females, and the average pup litter is 6.7 pups per litter, you can have three females, which ultimately would lead to 25 dogs per litter, that's one time, and if, you know, we could look at 75 dogs, if we went back to the Crockett's, we ultimately can have 75 dogs in a three-bedroom residential house in Christiansburg. So I'm just trying to nip it in the bud, as Barney Fife would say, and hopefully this doesn't reoccur. Since then, I also have another photo, one more photo I want to give to the town, and this is Victoria Crockett, after she got out of incarceration. You can clearly see on the door, the signs from the town of Christiansburg saying this home is condemned. You cannot live in it until you clean up the feces and the mess that the animals made, and what does she have in her hand? A puppy. So she's just not getting it. So, that's all I'm here for. I do appreciate your time, I do appreciate town council getting behind us when we first made the initial complaint, and we just hope that Christiansburg strives to tighten up a little bit on the ordinance system.
Thank you.
And hopefully, we won't have to deal with it. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else, Federalist Town Council? Chris, I'm sorry, you had a gentleman in the back, had his hand up before you did.
What did he just give you? What did he just give you?
Yeah, my name is Ed Shack, I live at 1391 Dow Street, and I just have a question or a concern. Mr. Crockett's dealing with these dogs, I live basically across the street, can almost see his backyard, he's got these big barricaded fences up, but what he was doing, it was kind of like a revolving door with him. He never had the same number of dogs, or the same dogs, for any length of time. He would get dogs in, breed them, when the pups were able to be by themselves, they would disappear, another group of adult dogs would come in, then they would disappear, so this thing's going on and on. My concern is, and I guess my question is, and I guess go back to animal control, I know the dogs are supposed to be tagged, but is there any database, or could somebody find out, if there's a database that if animal control is called in, he can ID these dogs to that residence, and not, say, from Rome, or Caser, or some other area, so I think that's something we should maybe look into, and I'm not sure of the answer right now, but that's just something I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
I'm not sure either, because the licensing is done at county level, so I'm not...
Yeah, I don't know, but, you know, that's, I mean, I think that would maybe slow down that whole situation throughout the town, that if animal control could have a database, or does have a database, I have no idea how that's done, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Joe Walter? All right. If there's no one else to address town council on public comments, we'll close those. Introductions and presentations, we have Michael Abraham to speak regarding a follow-up and update on the request of zoning amendment for clubs and lodges in I-2 General Industry and Conditional Use Permit Request regarding Moose Lodge at 225 Industrial Drive Northeast. This was denied by the town council July 11, 2017. Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Oh, there you go.
I heard my name called.
You moved silently.
I went and got... Good evening, everyone. It's been a year since I was in this room, the very evening you just spoke about, Mr. Mayor, the evening the council refused to change the zoning ordinance, or a conditional use permit, requested by Moose Lodge 1470, that would have allowed them and all clubs and lodges into the I-2 zone, and specifically into my complex, which is the threshold center in the Christiansburg Industrial Park. My dad had died just a few weeks before that, and I was too upset that evening to have spoken to anyone at the time, but I've spent the intervening months calming down, and I'd like to give you an update on that situation from my perspective. Generally, anytime there's a consequential decision to be made by any government, for example, the noise ordinance that I know you've been working with, there will be winners and losers, so let's look carefully at that. In this decision, who are the losers? Well, clearly, my family and I, we're the biggest losers. The bay in question is 5,000 square feet, and in the intervening months, we've had only partial occupancy. We've lost out on over $25,000 in income, and that money can never be regained. Demand for industrial space is spotty and infrequent, and this bay has not been fully occupied for over three years. Your decision was not theoretical or inconsequential to me. This is my ability to provide for my family and reap the benefits of substantial risk and investment. My extended family has been investing in this community for over 60 years, and it's heartbreaking and deflating to know how little respect we've gotten for that. The Moose Lodge 1470 spent considerable time and money researching options and applying to be in my building. That time and money were wasted, and their quest continues. Their executive director has told me that they have lost over $15,000 in higher rent and utilities, money that they could have spent on service projects for this community. He said they're still looking, and they are hoping to leave Christiansburg as they feel disrespected and unwanted here. Is this really what you want? Indeed, if they leave, the town is another loser. So who are the beneficiaries? As far as I can tell, nobody. So let's talk about the reasons that I heard why this failed, and why I suggest those reasons are not compelling. First is the notion that prime industrial land is precious, and should be devoted to companies that do lots of hiring. Councilman Hubbard, you said in print last year that the industrial park is designed for new companies to come in. That sounds compelling, but it's not. Why? A, the notion persists, perpetuates a mindset of an economic model that factually no longer exists. Since the park was envisioned and developed in 1986, America's transitioned from an industrial economy, and manufacturing is a far smaller slice of the economic pie than it was back then. Thirty-five percent fewer Americans work in manufacturing than they did 30 years ago. To my knowledge, the park has only attracted a handful of new tenants in the last several years, and I don't think a single one is a manufacturer. Second, B, with the expansion of 124 acres in the Falling Branch Park, that concern is simply no longer valid in this community. Christiansburg has enough industrial land to provide opportunities to the lifetime of just about everybody here. C, as an example of how the park is now being used, my friend Gary Duncan owns the largest building in the park, it's 110,000 square feet. In this massive cavernous building, he employs five people. Second is the sentiment that putting a club or lodge in the park will somehow cheapen or degrade it. To my knowledge, the only person who voiced opposition was a neighbor who said, "This is an industrial park, not a bar or restaurant. This will open them up for cheap retail space in the future." Actually, your zoning ordinance already allows for restaurants, retailing, and a variety of other uses in the I-2 zone. Furthermore, this logic is hopelessly antiquated. Nowadays, commercial, industrial, office, and research parks across America are eagerly hosting cafes, restaurants, fitness centers, even daycares, daycare centers, and other businesses that enhance and bring new vitality to the parks, and to the community overall. Third was this slippery slope argument, that if you allow this club and lodge, you'll need to allow any club into the I-2 zone. While that's factually true, to my knowledge, there may be only one or two other clubs in town that would ever have the wherewithal to buy or develop in any I-2 zone, and most are facing declining membership. Are we truly concerned that the Freemasons or the Knights of Columbus will overwhelm our industrial parks? Fourth, and this is really important, there's nothing the Moose Lodge or any other club and lodge would ever do, that isn't already expressly allowed in the I-2 zone, or would have a negative effect on the neighbors or the property values in the park. Having them there would be an asset to the park, for many reasons, they would be a great neighbor. People have said to me in the meantime, "Don't be bitter, just let it go," but let's look at this. According to your zoning ordinance, again, you'll allow me to rent my space to a dentist, a butcher, a blacksmith, or a drive-in restaurant. You'll let me rent my space to someone who makes bags, or boxes, or glass, or pickles, or sauerkraut, or relishes, or matches, or ink, or cigars, or barrels, or candles, or even tallow. You'll let me rent my space with the conditional use permit to an adult business, such as an adult bookstore, or even a porn video store, but you won't let me rent the Moose Lodge? Where's the fairness in this? Communities remain successful when they are progressive, not merely in their motto, but in their actions. They embrace change, they diversify their economies, and they adopt to evolution in the business environment. They support, rather than punish, the businesses that bring investment and prosperity. The longer this council clings to an outdated, indefensible model, the more damage it will do to the citizens, investors, and community it's empowered to serve. It feels surreal to me to stand in front of you tonight, in this town where I grew up, and have worked so hard and invested so much for so many decades, that I have to beg town leadership for permission to rent my space in my building to this respectable, cherished, and historic organization. Please, for me, for the Moose Lodge, for fairness, and for this town, won't you please reconsider right away, before we lose this opportunity? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Parks and Recreation Director Brad Everling to present regarding a new bike share program, RMB. Brad?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thanks for allowing me to be here tonight. Excited to talk to you a little bit about our bike share program, that's a region-wide program that we're getting ready to start. Okay, so, the, yeah, yeah, okay. So just want to let you know, our committee is the New River Valley MPO Bike Share Advisory Committee. Representing in that is myself, Emily Gibson, who's the Planning Director of Montgomery County, Steve Ross, Deputy Town Manager of Blacksburg, Jerry Baker, Director of Parking and Transportation at Virginia Tech, Tom Fox, Blacksburg Transit Director, Eric Olson, MPO Transit Planner, Dan Brew, Executive Director of the NRB MPO, Christie Straight with the New River Region Commission, Andrew Warren, here within the town of Christiansburg, as well as Callie Casper and Randall Nguyen. So the committee that makes up this bike share program was formed a, you know, a few months ago, and basically as representatives from each of the localities, the universities, and some of the transportation experts in our area. A little bit about the bike share program. It's, as I mentioned before, the partners are Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery County, and Virginia Tech, and then along with that, who also work as partners within the region, is Blacksburg Transit, the Regional Commission, and the MPO. Boundary lines of the bike share program would include the entire area of both towns, Christiansburg and Blacksburg, as well as Virginia Tech, and there would be a buffer zone that would go through the Huckleberry Trail in the Montgomery County section. The bikes of choice, as you see the bikes up here on display now, is a bike from Gotcha, that is the company that was selected through the RFP process. In the initial installment of this bike, we will have 75 bikes that are identical to the one that you see beside of you here, and they will be seven-speed bikes due to the hilly terrain that we have here in our area, and we also will be introducing 13 electronic assist bikes at a later date, most likely it'll be in September. There's a little bit of delay with the e-assist bikes due to Uber has bought out Sobe Bikes, and so it's put a little bit of a delay in that, but we're looking forward to that. We've actually gotten a lot of comments of folks who are interested in the e-assist bikes and those types of things, which is obviously a good asset to have, if you have someone who's wanting to get into shape, wanting to do bike riding, but maybe hasn't done a lot of bike riding, it's a way for them to have some assistance with the process. Each of these bikes will have a GPS monitoring system. This monitoring system will be able to track usage, as well as the location of the bike, so if the bike's going 35 miles an hour, or 55 miles an hour down I-81, we probably know that somebody's not driving, and so it is a location monitoring item, and it will give alerts and those types of things. It also gives popular destinations of where someone maybe would ride their bike to, and at that point, you could do sort of an electronic bike station there, instead of necessarily having to lock the bike up to a rack. So if you had a major special event or something like that, and you wanted to be able to allow someone to bring their bike, to bring one of these bikes to that location, but maybe we don't have the actual, you know, hardware for the bike rack system there, we can make that happen, from an electronic perspective. In the initial stages of the bike share program, our locations that we will have bikes and bike racks will be at the Christiansburg Recreation Center, as well as at the New River Valley Mall. The mall area, we will place that at the New River Community College entrance, and it's a fairly busy entrance as well there, and we look at different areas as we move forward with the bike share program, but from an initial installment, those were the two locations that we decided upon. So, membership costs and types, the committee worked really hard to make this program a program that was very much a service for the region. The annual cost of a pass is $60. That provides a person 120 minutes of free ride time per day, and it gives them 60 minutes of hold time, and as you can see, it goes down accordingly. The monthly passes are $20, day passes $10, and then a single trip is $4 per hour, and it will go down to 15 minutes per dollar. With that, you might ask, if there's bike racks and bike locations, as you can see there, the hub is considered where bike racks are located, so if someone was to ride the bike and go to a restaurant, or go to grab a coffee, or something along those lines, and there wasn't a bike rack there, basically what they could do is they could put the bike on hold. There's a certain amount of hold time that they can use, dependent upon the pass that they have. They can go in for, to grab a bike, or to get a coffee, or whatever it might be, and they would not be penalized for anything along those lines. If you lock the bike up out of the hub, basically out of the racks, then it's considered a penalty, and basically that's an incentive to make sure people bring bikes back to the racks. As I mentioned before, the bike system is the town of Blacksburg, the town of Christiansburg, and the buffer zone through the county, as well as Virginia Tech. If someone takes a bike and they leave a bike outside of that particular area, of that system, then there's a... system, then there's another penalty. It's a $50 penalty for that. Again, that is to ensure that the bikes are used within the system, and it encourages folks to make sure they're using the bike rack systems. We hope that the membership costs and items are benefited enough to where the annual pass is what most people will do. That's what our hope is. The Huckleberry Trail, the Huckleberry Trail, as we know, it's a major connection area for all of the localities and Virginia Tech. This bike share program provides another connection through that trail. By being able to have that main vein that connects our areas and our communities, it allows us to be able to do a lot of different things from a partnership perspective. And now, being able to provide that bike share program, we can provide for folks that might not have transportation from a motorized perspective, or even transportation from a bicyclist perspective. So, we really feel like that this bike share program is something that can take off in the future, and we're really looking forward to it. The main part of the trail is basically Blacksburg Public Library through to the Christiansburg Recreation Center. There will be rack systems put at both of those trailheads. As I mentioned before, the Christiansburg Recreation Center, but there will also be one at the Blacksburg Public Library. We look forward to future extensions of the trail into downtown Christiansburg and from Blacksburg. They would like to get to the, basically, the National Forest Property out through Pandapus Pond. So, the cost of the bike share installation, this was a great feature to have. The committee received a grant through the rail public transportation.
Let's call it down back there in the third row, please. Thank you.
Basically, there was a grant that was received through the rail public transportation area. That grant provided $200,000 for the installation of this bike share program, with a local match of $50,000 from the localities. As you can see, the funding split was split with Virginia Tech having eight stations, they were 66.7%. The town of Christiansburg and town of Blacksburg each have two stations, which at 16.7%. Montgomery County does not, at the current time, have a financial commitment due to them not having stations within their county buffer zone. There are opportunities for businesses, if they so choose, to be able to sponsor bikes and racks to have those at their businesses, if that is something that they would like to do in the future. This initial phase is basically just to get the bike share up and running, and then at that point, this particular program, we hope, will grow on its own. The Gotcha Company, who basically has the RFP, that's part of their job, is marketing this bike share program and reaching out to businesses and those types of items. And for us, it will be crucial to be able to link into our trail system and those types of items to make it accessible for everyone. So, the pre-launch, you'll be seeing in the near future, social media posts, press release, and different types of educational items. We, most recently, have been working with the public relations departments of each of the areas that I've discussed. Melissa has been very involved with us in doing a lot of the things to be able to prepare our community and to educate our community. I do have a few items here that I wanted to give each of you all. Basically, what you're given is frequently asked questions, and we will be providing that to our staff. That way, as the bike share program becomes into effect, we want to be able to give consistent answers across the board, whether it be in Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery County, Virginia Tech, or wherever it may be. So, this is that, basically, guideline or template to hopefully keep that consistent approach moving forward. The soft launch of the bike share program will be June 23. And basically, what the soft launch represents is Gotcha will have the bikes in place and have the racks in place by that time, and then people will be able to start using it. And then the ceremonial launch will be on Monday, July 2, and that will be held, the initial takeoff will be held at the New River Valley Mall. And part of the process of the ceremonial launch is we will take a ride from the mall all the way to Blacksburg. And so, we'll cut a ribbon at the mall, and then the goal is, from Blacksburg perspective, they'll do the same thing there. A local bike group, Bike Barn, has been selected as the company that will handle the maintenance of the bike share program, as well as balancing of the bike system. This is crucial, it's very important. You know, if you have 12 bikes in Christiansburg, and all 12 of them ride to Blacksburg, and we don't have any bikes here, it doesn't work very well. So, the balancing aspect is very, very important. So, that's where the maintenance company will come into play with the balancing and those types of aspects. From a maintenance perspective, it is direct contact with the Gotcha Company, and they will get to Bike Barn, and it is supposed to be fixed within 24 hours. So, a very good turnaround from a maintenance perspective. They are also in the process of hiring a general manager for the system. They do have a few folks that they are interviewing. Up until that time, their working group is going to be handling the general manager duties, but once they hire that general manager, they will sort of be overseeing the bike share program as a part-time position now, but the goal is for, as the system grows, that that will become a full-time position as well. So, I'll leave you with that. Get your wheels spinning and run to New River Valley. If anyone has any questions, please feel free.
I would just like to speak here for Brad Stipes. Brad has been, who usually sits right here, has been so much involved with the biking and trails, and it's just too bad that he is not here tonight, because I know that he would really applaud all of what you've done, Mr. Everly, and I think all council applauds what you do, but Brad has been our leader here on that, and I think I just wanted to say that on his behalf. And I also wanted to say, if you have not been on one of these electric bikes, the bikes are sort of heavy, but when you get on those babies, I mean, it's a treat, really. And you say that being in September, and if anybody gets an opportunity to do it, it'll be a real, it'll make your day.
Absolutely. I think there is a 15 mile an hour limit on it. But it is, it definitely will help, and, you know, we just look forward to, we didn't want to wait until September to unveil these, we wanted to go ahead and get these out. And, you know, the one nice thing about being able to do it now is we're able to allow the community to sort of get involved with the bike share program, really before the Virginia Tech students get back, and then there'll be another push with the Virginia Tech students. So, it's sort of, you know, you're able to get two major pushes out for the community, as well as for the university. And, you know, the last thing that I'll say to it is, to me, I've been privileged to be able to work as a chairperson for the committee. And, you know, sometimes when you get different localities, you get different universities, you got a lot of different mindsets and personalities and those types of things, but this has been a really great group to work with on a regional perspective, and it's, I think, as this thing grows, it just goes to show what we can do when we work together across the board. Any questions?
I have a question. A few weeks back, there was someone who knew about people using these bikes and just leaving them everywhere. How would we police that?
So, that was a different company that was happening with. It is Gotcha's responsibility, that's part of the RFP contract, to basically take care of that. That's one reason why there's GPS monitoring systems on each of the bike systems. It was very crucial. Andrew and I went out with their representative last week to look at our locations, and being able to have sunlight and those types of things were crucial, because that's how they charge the batteries, and that's how they use the GPS systems. They have an automatic alert system. Actually, as a matter of fact, Andrew went and got the bike today from the county, because it was at the county yesterday for a meeting, and we got an email that said, "Make sure you don't go over 35 miles an hour, the alarm's going to go off." So, there are different, there are different things that are set up to try to alleviate that. Is it going to alleviate everything? Probably not, but it is a step in the right direction. This particular company has bike share programs in a lot of really large places, Charleston, UNC Charlotte, just a lot of different areas, and they've been very successful. So, we hoped, you know, it was betted very hard on the RFP process, and the committee felt that this group was the best group, so, and that was one of the items that was in it to make sure that we're getting what we need.
Brad, I assume there's a standard rental contract and proof of ID when someone signs up for one of these things?
Yes, so there'll be a process that you go through. It's basically on each of the panels, it'll be a how-to of what you do, and you'll be able to basically put it on your credit card, or debit card, or whatever it may be. And basically, you're provided a PIN code at that point, depending upon what type of pass you want to get, and then you're able to use that. The other aspect of it is, is if there is a situation to where maybe you don't have a credit card, and you can only pay cash, then there will be certain locations that we will do that. One of the locations will be the Recreation Center in Blacksburg. I'm not sure exactly if they have a location on it. Virginia Tech's Parking Services will do it. So, we just wanted to make sure that we could reach everyone at that point the best that we could.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you all for your time.
Director of Engineering, Wayne Nelson, to present the 2018 Christiansburg Downtown Watershed Study with guests.
With guests, yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Barber. Good evening, members of council. In June of 2017, the town received a notification that we were a recipient of a $75,000 matching grant from the Department of Conservation for this downtown watershed study. Town staff solicited proposals for engineering services, and subsequently selected Amorton Thomas &amp; Associates and Hill Studio as the team most qualified. Town staff and the AMT team conducted a series of meetings to set the study goals, establish deliverables, and to review progress being made throughout this year-long study effort. Public education and outreach were requirements of this grant. Town staff and the AMT team hosted a public input meeting where residents and business owners provided input and identified potential flood-prone areas for consideration as part of the study. A second meeting was conducted where the results of this study were presented to the general public. One important outcome of this study was a matrix by which the projects identified as part of this study could be scored and prioritized for inclusion in the town's capital improvement plan. An added bonus is adjustment of the FEMA flood mapping that will benefit business owners by potentially lowering flood insurance rates. Before I introduce our guest presenter, I'd like to acknowledge Jesse Nestor, Assistant Director of Engineering in charge of capital projects and utilities. He, along with his, our civil engineer, Justin St. Clair, who couldn't be here tonight, he's preparing to get married this Saturday. They were very instrumental in facilitating the study and working with AMT. So, I'd like to introduce Don Rischmeyer. He's a Virginia Registered Professional Engineer and an associate with AMT, and the team leader for the study effort, to present both town council administration with the results of this study. Don?
Thank you, Wayne. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, I'd really appreciate being here, appreciate the nine months that we've put into working with the staff and a lot of the residents within the watershed to develop these results. And also, I wanted to recognize Josh Lester from AMT, our Christiansburg office, who's here with you tonight, as well as Josephine Arbott, who's here from Hill Studio, and was the lead planner on the project. This gives you the 11 study goals that were set at the outset, and the primary thing that I wanted to point out were the community meetings. It was very important, early in the study, to get the assistance of folks that live in the downtown area or in the surrounding residential neighborhoods to really understand what their flooding concerns were, and then at the end of the study, to present the results, and then pretty much ask the number-one question, "Do these projects address your concerns?" And then that was essentially the way we wrapped up the study less than a month ago. Now, we're working on the written report and final results. The first community meeting was basically focused on this board, it was back on October 26 of the last year. It included 18 known drainage and flooding issues that are shown with red asterisks. We also posted this on the project website and took online comment sheets from any interested residents, where they could go in and actually report out for an open comment period about additional flooding issues. The red asterisks grew from 18 to 28, so we did find 10 more concerns last fall to investigate as part of this study. And we have lots of pictures. So, I'm going to go through some of the locations that we identified for capital improvements and some of the photos that we've received. These photos are on Canane Road. They're from April 1992, and they show how some of the excess runoff, which is coming from the Sunset Cemetery, South Franklin Street area into this neighborhood, are causing roadside drainage issues throughout the neighborhood. There were, I think, seven reported drainage concerns from homeowners, all within a two-block street section, and it's near the First Church of God. The next photo, some of you may know this area. This was a September 2015 flood, and this is the intersection of Flegar and Crispin Street. And the situation here is that the storm drain system is undersized, and you're actually seeing water blowing out of that inlet through either a blockage or just undersized pipes that can't carry that amount of water through it, and then it's backing up, flooding the street, as well as flooding the private property to the right there. That flooding continues up onto Flegar Street and Crispin Street. And when you track from a watershed basis where this water's coming from, as you get to the upper portion of the neighborhood, there's two large pipes under the interstate that dump into the neighborhood, and then the pipes in the road downstream of that are smaller. So, that's going to lead to issues. That water, by the way, comes through the downtown area under Hickok in West Main, and then it makes its way parallel to Franklin into Town Branch. So, all of this water is, if you look at the watershed map, is coming from the residential neighborhoods through the downtown area, basically along three paths, and it all converged as basically at Devo and Franklin, where it dumps into Town Branch. So, this photo shows you, just after a flood event, what Town Branch looks like. The peak discharges are very, very high at that point. You're looking at about 1,000 acres of runoff to the point the photo's taken, and it does cause some stream stability and bank erosion issues in this area, which leads to sediment issues, turbulence, water quality concerns downstream in Crab Creek. That's one of the reasons the town recently completed a stream restoration project in this area, which was funded through the DEQ SLIF program, and was recently built. Our study includes consideration for a second stream restoration reach, which would basically go from Stone Street up to Franklin, Franklin and Devo, which is also an open channel section, but it does have some evidence of instability. So, due to the success of this project, there is an opportunity for the town to kind of extend the project up to Franklin Street. And this photo is showing you the culvert at Stone Street, which is basically the back entrance into Croger. And you can see the town has a vehicle parked in the middle of the road, closing it, because it was unsafe to cross through this area, and this, again, was shortly after the peak flood in September 2015. In this location, we've recommended a dual 10-by-5 box culvert, which is approximately twice as much pipe as you have there now, and that can convey what we call a two-year storm event, so a storm that has the likelihood of occurring once every 10 years on average. And this is also considered a high priority project in the study. So, one early success with the study, I don't know if this is official yet, I think it is official, the town did receive 50% funding from VDOT for a revenue sharing project on the country. Coincidentally, it's right in the same place where the farmer's market has been discussed. extensively, so it's good timing to get the infrastructure in the ground. VDOT's providing that funding shortly, and the town has the ability to move forward and build this project as a high priority project in the plan. This project replaces the older infrastructure. And in the image, you can see the red hatched area, that's where the existing pipe is. So you can see it goes under the buildings on Main Street and then discharges in the middle of the parking lot behind it. So it's not in a public right-of-way, and it's going under the existing buildings. And the photo in the upper right is a photo of one of those locations where all of that water from the watershed is draining underneath those buildings on Main. So the plan is essentially shown in blue. The plan is to put in a larger pipe that handles the 10-year storm event, runs the water down Hickok Street in a public right-of-way with access for maintenance, the ability for the town to maintain that system. And then it makes a right turn and connects back into a 72-inch corrugated metal pipe in the parking lot. So it goes around the buildings and it provides you good access to the storm drain system. This is another high priority project that came out of the plan. This is the North Franklin Street project. This one received revenue sharing funding in a prior year and is right now going through final engineering design for bidding and construction. So this is probably the first of the 10 projects you'll see get built. It's a similar situation. It's at the downtown area, and you can see the red dashed line where it says abandoned old pipe. Again, that's an old pipe that's going under some existing buildings on Franklin, and so the new system will be in a large system with 10-year capacity, and it'll put the pipe in a place through the parking lots and down the street where you could actually maintain it in public right-of-way easements. So that's not all 10 projects, but that's lots of information about at least half of them. They're all on the presentation boards, which we're going to leave behind, that are outside of the lobby for anyone who's interested in taking a look. I've also got them up here on the slideshow for council. In total, the 10 projects total approximately $18 million to budget in order to implement the entire plan for the watershed. This is limited to the Town Branch watershed, and it does specifically address those identified drainage concerns that we've been investigating. The locations are summarized on this presentation board, and also the budgets and a brief description of each one of the 10 projects. This is also going to be available through the watershed subpage on the town website. And we'll continue to post updates to get the final report out there with all the recommendations. Because this was a high-cost program, we did put a lot of focus, just in the past four, six weeks, on the ranking criteria, played a lot with the different criteria that are used in order to rank the projects. And in the end, this board is showing you the ranking from number one to number 10 priority level based on those scores. The North Franklin Street project is ranked number one right now, and the other highly-ranked projects are going to be Hickok Street, College Street, and the box culvert at Stone Street. College Street essentially relieves some of the flooding issues with the existing drainage systems on Franklin and running through some of the private parking lots downtown, so it's like a third system that collects all of this water from the 1,000 acres or so that's coming to the downtown area. So it's a critical link, and the others, you saw why those are high priority projects as well. This is the floodplain map, and the area of concern is the circle, the lower red circle. You can see the existing floodplain map maps the intersection of Depot and Franklin as a floodplain, and then it continues up into the private property on both sides of those streets. In reality, the Town Branch ends at Franklin Street, and there is no channel anymore next to Franklin upstream of that. There used to be, but now it's piped. So we're in discussions with FEMA Region 3 about doing a map revision, and depending on the status of the county mapping, that'll be something we'll coordinate as a result of this study to hopefully get FEMA approval to remove that Zone AD designation that you see in the lower circle. And then your AD zone in the upper circle will be mapped based on more accurate mapping and more accurate modeling of the watershed, which is a result of this study. And that'll be your new floodplain limit. They will probably want to retain the Zone X designation that you see, and that's a good thing for planning reasons, because those are still going to be areas where for large storm events, you're going to have a 10-year drainage system, but there's a potential for shallow depth flow through the streets and drainage system overtopping for really extreme storm events, and that's what the Zone X is for. It's areas of infrequent shallow depth flooding for planning purposes. You do not have to get flood insurance in a Zone X. It's not considered a part of the special flood hazard area in the FEMA program, but it does give you a designation for planning purposes on where all the water does come into downtown before it reaches Town Branch. So to conclude, we are going to work on finalizing the written engineering report, do the map revision with FEMA and the town in coordination, as well as closing out the grant with DCR. We'll get everything loaded up to the website as a project update, so the community can see it, and we'll also get the town's GIS database updated to include all this additional information, the additional surveying, mapping, watershed delineations, pipes, everything that we've concluded will be available through GIS for town staff to use for future planning. And so the next step is figuring out through this stormwater enterprise fund which projects to do and in what order. The rankings are a recommendation. That's certainly up to y'all to decide which projects need to be done and what order and where the funding comes from, but it gives you, you know, some sort of a guidepost based on the criteria. It's an Excel spreadsheet the staff can work with you on changing some of the criteria, seeing what happens if you don't consider environmental benefits or don't consider dollars per watershed acre. So, and we could always workshop that with the staff to look at different ways of looking at it. I've run it probably 10 different ways in the past six weeks, and it generally comes out to the same ranking. So it's pretty clear which projects are on the higher end and which projects aren't going to be as much of a community benefit, but are going to be a really significant benefit for a few homeowners that are directly impacted by those flooding issues, which is wider than the plan. That's my last slide, so I will leave that up and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Will you all make yourselves available? I think we have an assister here after the meeting out at the boards. If someone had questions?
Yes, yes, sir. I'll be available after, and there is a really cool fact sheet over here for anyone who's interested. We brought 40, so there's plenty if everybody wants one. That gives you a little narrative about the study, shows you where the improvements are going to be done. And then there's this idea of doing a walkable watershed that we developed on the back of the handout, and it ties very good into the bike share, and they have connections to the Huckleberry Trail and some of the vision of just having a walkable watershed. And you could Google that if you're young enough to know what that means.
Any questions from council?
I might be behind the times, but I know that the downtown in Cambria, down there by the railroad tracks, has always been a big problem. Has that already been corrected, and there's nothing else that needs to be done on that? Or is the Cambria area for floodplains in fairly good shape?
Well, our bridge replacement addressed a lot of that problem. There is a building restriction downstream of the bridge that is not a real easy solution to that problem.
As good as the storm grade or something, that was not large enough for a long time, right? And it couldn't just handle all the water. And has that been enlarged? I really don't know.
You mean the bridge itself?
Well, the grade, I was thinking, right below it.
Behind electrical supply?
Yes, uh-huh.
Behind electrical supply.
Well, really in front of the depot is what I'm thinking about.
There have been some improvements made, but we are still looking at that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, Wayne. Committee reports. Mr. Collins?
Well, the important one I had with the ride share, with the rec committee, that's what they've been working on a lot, extremely hard, and the planning commission has been swarmed, you know, with the always ordinance and other stuff we're working on, too. We might want to look at some other things, you know, that we can discuss some other time, but I mean, we need to, the planning commission probably needs to have a work session to see what direction we need to go right now, CUP stuff. And also, too, I'd like to add something to the discussion.
To the who?
Discussion, I counsel, of the vote for the funds, I CUP property. Add that, vote on it tonight.
Do you have a, is that a form of motion?
It is, yes, sir.
Do you have a second?
I do have a concern about the noise, though, before I could vote. I don't want to get in the same situation that we have with the starlight and residences bugging up next to each other. Has the planning commission discussed that?
No, that wasn't a concern with anybody. I mean, you know, they're...
Let's just put it off until we've had a chance to have your questions answered.
All right. That's all, Ken.
Mr. Bishop? Mr. Showalter?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Hubbard?
Well, I was going to talk about this on the council reports, but I just wanted to talk about the Aquatic Center for a second, and I'm not sure if everybody knows this, but they have a summer camp that has 50 campers every week, and they're going to do it for 10 weeks. And about every week is a sell-out. Kids get to do numerous different things at the Aquatic Center summer camp. And a good thing about it this year, too, is Food America has donated food lunches for every camper every day of the week, and they bring up this little packet, it's all well-organized. And also, the skateboard park, every day, any kid who's at the skateboard park will get a free lunch and they're served...
Any kid in town?
Yeah.
Any kid in town?
Any kid in town, and they'll be there from 12:01, and I think Mayor Barber was over there the other day helping him out. So I just wanted to give out some good things that happened this summer for our kids.
Got it? Ms. Sax?
Tomorrow, there's a central business meeting. I'd love to see some faces there. It's at noon here in the conference room. Some of the things that we will be talking about is the lodging tax related to Airbnbs. We have the Hickok Street closing, farmer's market, weight finding signs, grant updates, and that's the majority of the top-rated stuff. And then yesterday, we had a meeting related to recycling and waste, and we talked about commercial dumpsters, and we're looking at the efficiency of those, whether it's smart for us to keep the service or not.
Pretty good. I don't have anything any different to report. Mr. Hubbard covered the Feeding America program and how interesting it is. I really enjoyed, we had two or three groups from other camps, other programs throughout the town and the county were there yesterday, so it was quite interesting to see. Under discussions and action by Mayor and Council, action on condition to use permit request for Safe Haven Family Services Incorporated, agent for corn holding corporation for a single-family residential dwelling, 2175 Palmer Street, Northeast Tax Map Number 466-A-17 in the B3 General Business Zoning District. The property is designated as business commercial on the future land use map of the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Public hearing was held for this on May 27th.
Mr. Mayor, you actually voted on this at the last meeting. You missed the agenda last time to vote on it.
Who fixed this agenda?
I think we blocked a few things, it's basically carried over.
All right. Then since we've already passed that, we'll move on. Proposed partial closure of Hickok Street Northwest to vehicular traffic from a distance of approximately 170 linear feet. I believe that is the, allow, that would still leave the access to the church property off of Hickok Street.
Correct.
Do I hear a motion?
No motion. To close the street as stated.
Okay. Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
Councilwoman Showalter.
Aye.
There's 501 absent. Budget resolution fiscal year 2018, 2019. Randy, is that yours or Val's or...?
Basically, adoption of the budget, of course. If you have any questions, of course, we've had work sessions.
Public hearings?
Yes, public hearings.
Do we have a motion that we approve the 2018, 2019 budget?
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget as presented for 2018, 2019.
I'll second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Ms. Askins?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Showalter.
Aye.
There's 501, and Councilman Snipes emailed all of council his additional support for the budget, which I can't count his vote, but he was in favor of it. Appropriation resolution for the fiscal year 2018, 2019 annual budget. And that is?
It's appropriating the funds that you just approved in the budget.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion?
So be it.
Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Showalter.
Aye.
Mayor, just like I said, on regards to the budget, you know, there are people who are on council, Mr. Showalter being one of them, and Mr. Wingfield and Ms. Tweedy did a super job this year, and as a member of the council, I appreciate all of your work and your effort, and it looks like it's going to go out very well.
We have ordinance adopting personal property tax rate 2018, 2019. There is no change.
That's correct.
And it is how much?
Personal property tax rate is 45 cents per hundred.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There's a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Showalter.
Aye.
There's 501. Ordinance adopting real estate tax rate fiscal year 2018, 2019, which is, again, no change, is 16 cents per hundred?
Correct.
I'll go first to adopt that.
Do you move that?
I do. Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Showalter.
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance adopting water sewer fees for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? Got any questions, comments? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Showalter.
Aye.
Okay. Staff reports, reports. Mr. Wingfield?
I just want to point out the passing of our public works clerk, Eddie Smith, who's a longtime town employee, I believe he was employed for 37 years.
Correct.
And just he'll be greatly missed. And also, I'd like to set a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a wooden house at 3215 Renick Street, August 14th.
Do you want to vote on that one?
Could.
Okay, well, you can. So moved.
Show vote, thank you.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Shawalter.
Aye.
Madam Attorney?
Attorney.
Any other staff here to report? Thank you, council reports.
Well, so with this fine young man over here planting Huckleberry, I'm trying to say Huckleberry.
Lucius.
Lucius E. J. How'd y'all plant?
Thirty-three, thirty-four?
Thirty-three. Maybe we got down and got buried.
Pretty good. Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, I just want to bring out that this coming Saturday, Juneteenth celebration will be held at Rosa Peter Park, which is on Depot Street, and it's open to the public, and it's from 11 to 4:00. There will be entertainment, games, prizes, and education stuff going on. So I'm scanning this this Saturday at Rosa Peter Park on Depot Street from 11 to 4:00.
Understand the men's group's going to have their fish sandwiches?
No, I think they're going to have a different type of vendor coming in, the men will work in.
Okay.
So no fish sandwiches, as far as I can...
All right. Very good. Mr. Shaw?
Regional Commission meeting, our present, our presentation by Habitat for Humanity. It's pretty interesting. It's like, Mr. Collins, you weren't there with us. But how they were, one of the things I took out of it, the Restore, I believe it's a, it's behind McDonald's up on...
Habitat.
Yeah. Anything that's purchased there goes to fund Habitat for Humanity. And if you guys, I think the impression I had from years ago when I worked for in the finance, private sector, we volunteered for Habitat for Humanity, had a certain view of what they delivered services. And it's totally different now, or at least my view of it back then compared to now is a lot different. They have a lot of projects going on, not only in Kielaski, but also in Christiansburg and Blacksburg. And the Christiansburg and Blacksburg projects are designed for high density, so they're more like townhomes, and they gave us sort of a preview of what they're building over in Blacksburg and here. It's unlike anything, if you have a pre-potion of Habitat for Humanity, it's totally different. So you get an opportunity to look at their website, take a look at that. They also went in the depth of the qualifications for their clients to have those houses, and again, there's a lot of, you know, misconception on these people who actually move into those house, but houses, but they do pay for them. They have to go through certain programs. Some seem very rigorous to get in there, to clean up the credit and to maintain it. And of course, Habitat always keeps a, at least a second mortgage on it so they don't get out of control, you know, like what happened back in the 2000s in the mortgage, when the mortgage bubble burst, not unfamiliar with that, but if you haven't had a chance to look at it, take a look at it, it's pretty neat. Change a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Halligan, I'm going to segue into something that Ms. Sacks mentioned in their meeting tomorrow. They're going to talk about Airbnb, and I would like, Randy, with council's blessing, I would like you, planning, whomever, to review what Blacksburg did. They just completed theirs, and I'd like to be started on it. I'm not sure this is something we can instigate in three months. I think there's a lot of inspection, there's a lot of things that have to be done, but I think we need to start looking at getting it in, getting it in place. Thank you. Any other business to come before council? Thank you.